Not so great.
Well, I mean, I've got TDS also, so maybe. Okay, welcome to the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners meeting. This is nine AM Wednesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands one nation under the delivery of its own.
So I see Commissioner Dare's remote today, so thanks for joining us. We were able to all three of us be remote last night. So as I say, it was a shame not being in Redmond for the joint meeting with the Fair Board, but it was a valuable meeting for all of us to attend. At this time, citizen input, input. Is anybody in the room or anyone online for any item? Okay. Yeah, if she's ready, we can do that. So this will be. Thank you for joining us, Derine.
Good morning. I wanted to remind you guys that it's International Lead Poisoning Prevention Week and the theme is in childhood lead poisoning. EPA Administrator Michael Reagan said, when it comes to our children, the science is clear exposure can lead can cause irreversible and lifelong health effects. Aircraft that use leaded fuel are the dominant source of lead emissions to air in the country. The eleventh International Lead Poisoning Prevention Week is taking place this week. The focus of this year's campaign in childhood lead poisoning reminds governments, civil society, organizations, health partners, industry, and others of the unacceptable risk of lead exposure and the need for action to protect children's health. Deschutes County has an airport with the highest source of airborne lead in the state and one of the highest in the nation, but there is no mention of this campaign to the to end childhood lead poisoning on a single county agenda item. There is FAA approved drop in replacement fuel, but you've not you've not pursued that either. Every day of delay is another day of potentially irreversible lifetime injuries. Um, you know, like causes an increase in cognitive decline and violence and poor educational outcomes, dementia. The genotoxic, genotoxic endpoints induced by lead have been well demonstrated in different test systems. It's found to produce positive responses in several biological and biochemical tests for DNA breaks and lesions, mutations and DNA oxidative damage. This county celebrates and honors just about everything except protecting the children of our county. Please, please add this to an agenda item this week. Our children need to be protected from this neurotoxin. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the testimony. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing none at this time, consent agenda.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I second it. I just think we should discuss item three.
Uh, so you want to pull up for discussion or just add a comment right now?
Well, I just think it's interesting that we're still short of nurses and the, you know, the jail is trying to really help people with their issues. And they feel that it's so important that they're going to have to hire temporary people. So, you know, it's, it's significant.
So, uh, how about we pull that for discussion? Captain Schultz, just a few comments on the kind of scenario what's going on. So, uh, so this is our consent agenda. Do you support that? Uh, yeah. So consent agenda. Motion minus item number three.
And so moved again.
Yeah, sorry. And then Commissioner Dare.
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, so for the consent agenda, everything but item number three. Any other discussion? Call him for the Commissioner Chang. Commissioner Dare.
Uh, yes, and Captain Schultz did bring this up at the Behavioral Health Meeting on Friday. So.
Great. Well, let's go to item number three then. Yeah. So please join us since you're here. Uh, so just, uh.
Can we get your vote? Sorry.
Oh, I vote yes. Thank you so much for keeping an eye on that. So that was consent agenda and now item number three. Uh, so yeah, just kind of the scenario. We know we have, uh, you know, health services provided for, uh, people in, uh, in the jail. And now the staffing levels.
Yeah, I think it's in Captain Michael Schultz, Deschutes County Sheriff's Office. I think it's important to outline, you know, not only are we, you know, we're looking to serve the most vulnerable individuals in our community the right way, but currently, you know, with staffing shorties all over across America and certainly here in central Oregon, we struggle to be able to get nurses into our area as well as St. Charles. When I met with the behavioral health team, we talked about those issues and we talked about even with St. Charles, you know, doing more wages, how difficult it is to bring people into our community and and even with that, St. Charles is still struggling, struggling to find nurses. And with our, with our ability, we're looking at better ways to compensate our nurses, uh, in a more fair fashion so that we can get folks coming in. We generally, we have eight FTEs for that position. When I first got here five years ago, we only had three of them filled and we used, uh, a contracting nursing service for our nurse practitioner to assist us. Well, unfortunately, back in those type of levels, we have eight positions open. Um, uh, for RNs, we have four of them filled. And we also have two LPNs that assist with our MAT, our Medicated Assistant Treatment, which we think will be a game changer for those that are suffering from addiction, that we can get them started even within four hours, coming in our system and say, do you want out of this lifestyle? And we have a medical professional right there to help them assist. And we have a great partner, Ideal Option, to be able to send them to and Community Resources to be able to get folks from continuing to re, uh, recommit crimes and get them on a path to be good citizens in our community. This is just a bridge. We're hoping with, uh, with changes in with the nation that we're going to be seeing that more people are going to be applying and will get us through the, through the gap. Of course, this is, we put in a, a marker for five hundred thousand and hopefully we can get four nurses out of the, uh, from this temporary service to be able to bridge our gap and get us to, uh, to be able to serve our, our public efficiently.
Right. Commissioner Dare, any comments? Nope, backwards. You're on mute now.
Sorry. Um, no, I just, I just appreciated you, Captain Schultz, bringing those words for the public because um, I appreciate what you do and thank you.
Okay, yeah. So this is services to be provided. We've been doing this for a long time, but just keeping the staffing levels.
Captain Schultz, can I, I'd like to ask just a couple of questions. So, um, can you, can you run back through? I, you, you were, you were giving a lot of numbers pretty fast. It was hard for me to track. Uh, how many total positions do we have at this point and how many are vacant?
So we have, um, for RNs, we have eight. We currently have four members. We just lost two, uh, two individuals to for higher paying jobs in the community. We also have two LPNs that we, we are, we staff, but those are out of our grant, uh, with Ideal Option on our MAT program that we're trying to fill. So that's total six there. We are down one behavioral health specialist that we had an individual leave, uh, to take another position. And, uh, just recently, we may have another, our, our release planner, behavioral health specialist one, social worker that does our warm handoffs, um, has, uh, uh, is about rated whether to turn, she just went on, um, leave, family leave and is contemplating whether she wants to do that full time or come back to work. So, so in all, we might have six, seven, six, seven, eight positions that we need to fill. Right now with the bridging the gap, we're just looking at trying to get four individuals in to kind of make us healthier to move to continue with our MAT program.
Um, okay, so the, uh, this is driven in significant part by, by wanting to, to fully support the MAT program.
Correct.
Not broader health, health needs.
Um, well, I think it all goes into play, you know, individuals coming into our system. Uh, every one of them has some special need, um, you know, very vulnerable people coming in, whether it's drug addiction. They might be diabetic, they might have heart issues, all those type of things that we're able to, to be able to confront head on right away and then maybe get the right resource. And that might be send them right back to the hospital. Or at least when they come in and they go through the court process and they're getting released that we set up some appointments for them to go to so that they, they're not going right back into the system of, of not taking care of themselves.
Um, so my other question was about, um, essentially our competitiveness, um, with entities like St. Charles, you know, St. Charles just negotiated a substantial pay increase for their nurses, uh, under, under their current contract. Are we, you know, at the, at this point, are we, uh, um, not competitive with other healthcare providers in the community? And, and I mean, you know, there's, there's, you know, basic wage and benefit comparisons. And also, you know, the county jail is a, is a unique place to practice health services and, and, um, you know, I, I wouldn't, I, I, um, I, I don't necessarily think that we're competing. You know, that, uh, not every, not every healthcare professional in our community is, is ready to, ready to sign up for a job at at the, at the county jail to provide health services either. So, you know, can you comment on our competitiveness with, uh, other healthcare providers?
Yeah, although I'm not an expert in labor relations, you know, or, but we, you know, the nice thing about our office is we have a good relationship with our labor organization and we talk about these issues quite often and we know we have contract negotiations coming up and we would support, you know, our, our nurses and our staff members to be, to get fair wages, uh, so that we can be competitive. Uh, not only do we want nurses in, we want the best nurses. We want those that want to take care of the most vulnerable and, and it can be very violent in our system. So it is, you know, our type of medical is, is different. Um, and we've done a great job hiring them and the ones that have stayed with us are, are excellent, better than I've ever seen. And, uh, we want to continue with that. And of course, wages are going to be one of those topics in order to bring them to us.
Can I ask which, which union is that?
Uh, they, they are part of the correction, the, the Deputy Sheriff's, uh, Union along with the Patrol Deputies and the Corrections Deputies.
Even though they're, they're healthcare professionals, they're still. Okay. Uh, I mean, the, the other, the other thing I'll, I'll just say is, um, there are all kinds of essential workers in our community who are struggling to, um, uh, you know, to you know, struggling with the cost of living in our community, housing being, you know, a, 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 a primary driver of that. And um, I, I, this is just one more reminder to us that um, as the, as the county government, as a local government entity here, we can be doing more to, um, help our community produce, uh, housing that is attainable to our, our local workers and um, in, in so doing, help to alleviate some of these problems that we're, we're, we're seeing, these acute workforce shortages we're seeing across many sectors of essential workers.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that. And I, I know our sheriff is, uh, right on top of this topic. And I know he appreciates all of you, all three commissioners, because these are issues you guys talk about and I want to bring the best to central Oregon and and it can be a challenge right now, but working together, we'll be able to solve it.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Uh, yes, I would like to move Chair Signature of Document 2023-890, A Contract With Maxim Healthcare Staffing Services To Provide Temporary Relief For Deschutes County Adult Jail Medical Staffing Needs. And I just want to add one further comment at the market. Um, I learned that that employee is coming up from Clamath Falls to work in Sisters and they're being paid just like travel nurses. It was unbelievable. All her benefits for traveling to Deschutes County to work.
Your second, I'll second. Then motioned and seconded. Any other discussion? Uh, seeing none, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you for the discussion today.
Thank you for your time.
At this time, item number eight, uh, public hearing board order considering annexation of, uh, land for the, for the, for the Bend Park and Recreation District.
Kim Riley, Assistant Legal Counsel. This is another, uh, petition for annexation with Ben Parks and Rec. Um, this particular request is for eighteen point two six acres. Um, this is a formality, as you guys are well aware, that the commission, um, has to go through in order to hold a public hearing and then potentially approve the petition. It has been reviewed by all of the, um, offices and departments that need to review it. It's also received preliminary approval from Department of Revenue. Um, so at this time, we would request that we open the public hearing and thereafter consider approval.
Great. So at this time, I will open the public hearing on the matter of uh, annexation of eighteen point two six acres at six one one five zero Cabin Lane to the Bend Park and Recreation District. Is there anyone to speak on this matter? Is there anyone remote? A raised hand feature? Okay, yeah. So we have a representative from the park district. Uh, go ahead and bring her in if, uh, yeah, we can ask, are you, do, would you like to say anything on this topic? So Sarah?
Hi, um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, we always just listen in case there's questions. We have signed uh, the petition, um, so we are of, of course, in support of the annexation and it's a required um, annexation for this to be annexed into the city because it's already located within the UGB. So it's.
The audio is really hard to hear, Sarah. The audio. I don't know if, uh, microphone is in a bad spot or something. But I think I got out of that was the Bend Park District and you're, you representing. So you're supportive of this. But as I say, the audio is just fading away.
Sorry, uh, you did hear that correctly. Um, and I also just had added that this property is being annexed into the city. It's within the current UGB. So um, this is just a required annexation into the park district. For that annexation of the city. So we are in support. And don't have any comments.
Uh, so seeing no other comments, uh, the public hearing will be closed on this matter. And, uh, as I say, this is kind of a formality because all parties are already basically supportive of this. Uh, is there a motion?
I actually have some questions, um, if Sarah is still with us. Great, thank you. Um, so, uh, we just completed an annexation or, or we, we just approved an annexation, I think a week or two ago. Uh, and that prompted me to take a closer look at the, um, uh, to compare the, the urban growth boundary for the city of Bend with the Park and Rec District Boundary. And um, the Park and Rec District Boundary is bigger. Um, and I just, I, I was curious about kind of how that, how that came about and, um, you know, with, A, you know, how that, how that happens, you know, and, and then B, who is it who, who drives the additions to, um, to the Park and Rec District Boundary? I mean, in this case, there is a landowner uh, who wants to join. Uh, I'm, I'm curious whether in the past, it's, it's been all um, landowner initiated annexations to the, to the park district or whether, um, you know, there's, there's, there's some, something more in the history there about where the Bend Park and Rec District Boundary is.
I'll answer that the best that I can. Um, where the boundary of the park district is larger than the UGB unfortunately predates my time at the district. So I'm not sure about the history, I believe. I, I know we had a question on that, um, by the public once a while ago, and I was told that that happened quite a while ago, um, maybe like ten years or more. So the only expansion areas that we have now are those to align with the UGB. There's no new additions to the park district that exceed the UGB boundary. If that helps.
Yeah, well, it helps me understand what, uh, you know, moving forward, uh, how the Park and Rec District is approaching, you know, annexations and expansions. Um, and one of the reasons I ask about this is, is, uh, there is a lot of, um, uh, reemerging interests, uh, uh, south of the, of the urban growth boundary in the, in the city, of the city of Bend in a, a, a bridge, uh, to cross the Deschutes River that um, was approved for funding for construction a long time ago, um, during the Great Recession, uh, under a park district bond. But uh, I, if I understand correctly, that bridge falls within the district boundary, but, um, uh, it, it, it's outside of the Bend UGB. So, I mean, because it's in Deschutes River Woods, so that, um, you know, I'm just very curious about kind of how these two boundaries line up and how they got that way. So thank you for, for that information.
Of course.
So I think there was a motion. Uh, I don't know if you did second or are you willing to second?
Um, was there a motion?
Was there a motion?
A motion.
Okay, right before a motion. So somebody can make a motion.
I'll, I'll, I'll move approval of order number twenty twenty three dash zero four five approving the uh, Gabbert Annexation to the Bend Park and Recreation District.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any other discussion? Uh, seeing none, Commissioner Chang? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. Good discussion.
Thanks.
At this time, item number nine, Community Wildfire Defense Grant Application For Community Wildfire Protection Plan Revision. So it looks like kind of a big project all of a sudden.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Kevin Moriarty, County Forester. Um, I'm here today to request, uh, to authorize the submittal of an application for a community wildfire defense grant. Um, the Natural Resource Department seeks board authorization to apply for a federal community wildfire defense grant for the purpose of revising and combining the county's seven community wildfire protection plans, uh, into one protection plan. Um, by combining the seven CWPPs, it is expected to enhance the county's likelihood in receiving grants, which has been complicated by having several multiples CWPPs. In addition, each CWPP is updated every five years at a staggered schedule, which has resulted in a very large and unrealistic workload for the department. And just, uh, uh, for reference, um, I have yet to find a single county within the state of Oregon that has more than one CWPP and we have seven of them, which makes it very complicated. Uh, the proposal to combine the CWPPs into one document, which identifies the seven existing areas along with each area, unique stakeholders and its need for wildfire protection plan and fuel mitigation efforts. So essentially we'd be combining into one document, but we'd be keeping those seven different areas, uh, for all the, uh, community stakeholder meetings um, and, uh, integration with the stakeholders as far as community wildfire risk. Um, we have identified, uh, someone that is, uh, that could perform this task, uh, Shelby Knight with the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, um, has wrote up an initial plan of how they could perform that. Uh, we're still working on the pricing, but um, the, the grant application could be upwards of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a 10% match that we can provide from the county. Um, at this time, I'll open it up to questions. Uh, if you have any questions about this, and I also have Corinne Hyner online, uh, available as well. Who's the one writing the grant process?
Great, Corinne, thanks for joining us. So, uh, what was the, what's the history on this? Do you have a field? Did you do your homework or were you able to do your homework? I'm sure we could, but, uh, you know, when did we do the CWPPs originally? I'm thinking maybe the mid nineties.
I believe, uh, I, I am not familiar because again, it's before my time.
Came out of the, they came out of, um, I forget, the Healthy Forest Act.
Yeah.
During the, uh, George W. Bush administration.
Yeah, the CWPPs were essentially, uh, started with the Health, Healthy Forest Act, which I believe was in two thousand and three. Um, and that's when they started, uh, requesting those, uh, requesting communities to develop those, um, not only to improve, uh, collaboration between stakeholders, but to also, uh, provide opportunities for grant funding. Um, uh, so that was probably originally when it was done. Um, you know, we didn't have the technology back then and the, you know, the things that we can collaborate with presently. And I, I believe that we can, uh, effectively have one CWPP by still maintaining, um, that interaction with each of the communities and those stakeholders.
Well, and I'll be supportive of this. So just trying to think back. So about early two thousands, we had already probably been doing Project Wildfire in some form for 10 years. So that, you know, I'm referring to that now. It's in county code. Let's, let's have our neighborhood and our community members, uh, come to the table, talk about what does it mean to be uh, resilient to fire, uh, defensible space, best practices. Uh, you know, so maybe we were already kind of moving forward and then these things popped up. So there must have been a point where like, well, let's just do a bunch of them because we already have these, I don't know, regions or areas or each city plus north, south and east and west or whatever. I don't know what it was, but it's just interesting that we did come up with seven.
Yeah. Uh, my understanding that, um, the original seven was based on each individual, individual community wanting to have a voice, uh, in the process um, and making sure that they're engaged. And again, I feel like we can still, uh, have that process, but the, the process itself of creating seven documents versus one document, where a lot of your federal, state and local stakeholders are still the same signatures on every document, would just streamline the process and it would reduce the workload on our department.
Yeah, I, um, that I, I, I do believe that having the seven, the seven CWPPs uh, has been valuable in terms of, I, you know, each of the, the CWPP areas is still a pretty substantial geography. Um, and it, uh, the CWPPs have created the, the opportunity for stakeholders within those subgeographies of Deschutes County to have pretty intensive discussions to, to, uh, really focus in a very, uh, detailed or granular way on the, the specific, the specific needs on specific properties, um, you know, that, the unique fuels, conditions, uh, within those geographies and, and that has been valuable. Uh, if, um, if they're, if, if within this new structure, there's still, um, there'll still be essentially seven subgroups that meet on a regular basis to have these more in-depth, you know, geographically specific discussions. Um, and, and, you know, identify priorities and that'll all still be captured. So it'll be one big plan with seven parts or, you know, seven sections. Is that, is that the way it'll?
Yes, correct. Um, and I've looked at a couple similar plans like, uh, Jackson County, for example, that has a similar, uh, population size and potentially fire risk and complexity. They've based it off their fire districts. And so they have a chapter for each fire district that kind of engages with those areas where we've developed, uh, you know, seven areas and we can maintain that engagement within those seven areas.
Right, right. Do, um, how, how much do our, our seven CWPP areas line up with fire districts? That's it.
Um, they line up to some extent, I would say. That probably was an initial reason why those areas were broken into the way they were. Um, but there is, I would assume some overlap with those fire districts.
Because I mean, that actually sounds like a very smart way of, of, of structuring, you know, structuring your subgeographies. Um, is to do it by fire district, but, um, um, you know, we, we, we are, you, you have existing groups. They're used to coming together around a certain spatial area and, um, that, uh, the, that, that would be the key thing. I would want to make sure that we, we preserve and maintain through, you know, through this consolidation is just that there are these individual, uh, sub-geography groups that, uh, get to have those really focused and detailed discussions and uh, advance the most important, um, fuels reduction, egress and other priorities, uh, within their areas.
Yeah, and, uh, Commissioner Chang, that is our plan. And, um, I don't know if you've read, uh, the proposal, uh, from the Central Oregon Intergovernmental Council, but that would be the idea is to engage, uh, with each one of those subgroups, uh, with one or multiple meetings, uh, to make sure we're capturing that information.
Right. And then, um, um, and then if there are, uh, you know, there, there will be a five-year updates. Um, the way that it has been set up, you, you know, you kind of rotate around so that there's just, you know, a, a a couple of subgroup, you know, a couple of, a couple of the seven that are a focus on any given year. Um, with this structure, if we go to one CWPP, you will still be doing kind of focuses on subgroups and updating their information. You will still be doing kind of focuses on subgroups and updating their information on specific years. Or you'll try to do the all like in, you'll you'll try to work with all seven groups in the one year before the the update occurs.
Yeah, we we imagine the process would take um approximately two years to complete. Um, you know, C W P Ps generally uh have a ten-year lifespan. We update them every five years just to stay on track. With uh grant funding opportunities. Um, and so the initial uh, the initial revision would would take potentially two years. Mostly for the meetings and gathering the information, but a lot of the gathering and information um could be done um at a singular time. Uh, especially with our federal partners like the B L M, the Forest Service uh or Oregon Department of Forestry. Instead of having to do that seven different and seven different occasions. And then the real work that would be engaging in the communities and getting their projected uh, not only the past projects. That have been completed, but projected projects into the future.
Oh, so there may still be, you know, a bit of a scramble in that in that final year before the the five-year cycle is complete.
Yeah, I I do anticipate it would, it would still, you know, the initial update would probably take uh a couple of years. And rev and updates into perpetuity would still probably take a couple of years um just how how difficult it would be. To capture all seven of those uh uh those communities. But you know, we would always be potentially looking for uh extra help for these revisions um, which most counties do. They they utilize uh, you know, uh other organizations to try and update their C W P Ps.
Yeah, yeah, in the way that you're using C O I C in this case for this. This update. Okay, well, as long as you're not worried about the the crunch, you know, in at the at the first revision cycle. Um, and and that those, each of those seven groups, subgroups have have the opportunity to have those those really in-depth detailed focus discussions. Um, I I I'm I'm comfortable with moving forward with this.
When I think of uh, as I say, Project Wildfire itself, there's good history, long uh uh, you know, the culture of of defensible spaces. I mentioned uh, you know, maybe Project Wildfire has meetings around the around the county in those C W P P areas. Or the subareas that we may be calling now uh, just to get the community engaged to understand because. Not everybody sees the bigger picture sometimes about what's all going on and some of it's, well, I just want my neighbor to clean up his property. Well, we're talking about neighborhood landscape scale. Wildland urban interface uh, you know, so yeah, there there's opportunities in there, I think, also.
You also just uh, you 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 mentioned in the in the staff memo that this all enhances the county's likelihood of receiving grants. You, what is, what does that look like? Which which grant programs are we talking about and kind of how will this? How specifically will this help um with with applications?
Yeah, so um, you know, in some of the past grants that we applied for, um, some of the feedback we've got. Notably, the uh Community Wildfire Defense Grant that we applied for last year, um, some of the feedback we received um. Is it looks on paper, the projects and the project areas seem to be much more complicated than they are. Because if we're looking at seven individual C W P Ps and the grant is specifically written for one. Um, it looks like we're trying to, or it looks like our scope of work is way too broad. Where it really realistically is uh in a, you know, area-wise is not very broad. It just looks more complicated because we have seven individual C W Ps attached to a singular grant. Uh, most grants are, and like I said, in Oregon, all the other counties only have one C W P P. So when they apply for a grant, they're only referring to one where we have to refer to seven.
Understand. So there are actually grant programs that really are geared, you know, are typically geared toward one C W P P area. And we're trying to shoehorn in multiple C W P Ps because that's the way we're set up.
Correct. Good discussion. Is there um, so uh, we don't have specific application. Oh yeah, please.
Hello, yes.
Yep.
I see that uh the Upper Deschutes actually was done last in twenty eighteen. So have we done any work on that one to date? That's my question. And then it looks like they've only allocated eight hundred and fifty hours for this project, which one person working is twenty-one weeks. Um, it it seems like a pretty big project to pull it all together. And then my third um point is that the mileage reimbursement on this form from C O I C. Is for a federal reimbursement rate that's from like twenty-two. It's not even up to date. The twenty-four rate hasn't been given yet. But what about that plan that uh that the Upper Deschutes River from eighteen? Has anybody pulled anything together on that?
Yeah, so the the two revisions right now uh that we're working on is the Upper Deschutes, which we've already had uh two meetings on. Uh, we've been gathering all that information. We're working on that concurrently with this request. Um, as you know, proceeding with the process, uh, we, the main thing we're waiting on at this time uh is the wildfire hazard map. Uh, and that information, because that will go into the C W P Ps. And so we don't want to complete it prior to that being accomplished. And then we're also trying to do the east-west revision as well. And those are the two that we're trying to work on. Um, and we will continue to work on those uh with the anticipation that we potentially could get funding to combine all of them. So uh, we're trying to do the work uh while trying to look at other opportunities to streamline the process. Um, and I believe uh Commissioner Dare, I can't really remember the last question you had um.
The mileage rate is wrong on on this um application. It's wrong. So it doesn't look like whoever put it together is. Um, you know, it's just wrong. It's should be, uh, well, I don't know, next year's rate isn't available, but it's sixty-five point five percent for twenty-three.
Okay, that I, and again, this is just an initial draft of a proposal. We're trying to um. Uh, we're actually going to be working with Shelby at the end of this week, trying to uh revise this a little bit. We feel like the the cost is a little less than uh we anticipate. We feel it is going to be a much higher workload. Um, and so that's where we have came up with a potential of being up to a hundred and fifty thousand for the request. Um, and we can uh work with Shelby on making sure that the mileage rate is correct in that proposal.
And so if you've done the one, if you're also working on the eastern west version, Greater Sisters actually is twenty nineteen too then. Have you not touched yet?
No, and this is is this becomes the issue that we're having is um the workload to try and update these on a staggered schedule. Um, has been pretty difficult, especially when we have um changes in our wildfire risk assessments. Um, like the wildfire risk map that we're waiting on current currently. Um, and so that's a big thing that's kind of holding up our process.
But but it's, I mean, that is the, that is the procedure we've had in the past that they they. The plans get updated on a five-year cycle. So the fact that there's um plans that. Uh, you know, that there's a plan that was updated in twenty nineteen that has not had work on it since then is expected. Because, you know, it's supposed to be completed on a five-year cycle. So it would be, you know, that if we continued with the way we were doing things. That twenty nineteen plan would be updated in twenty twenty-four.
Correct. Yeah, so Sisters would be the next one.
Well, it sounds like there's a ten-year requirement with a goal of five-year update.
Yeah, the the there is no requirement for five years. We have, we've set that goal upon ourselves to update every five years.
And and you know, I know, I know from the 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 two and a bit years that I worked for the State Department of Forestry. That there are, there are counties who have, they they wrote C W P Ps originally back in the early two thousands. Who uh never updated them since then. Uh, so um, we're, you know, uh, us setting a goal for ourselves. To do five-year updates, I would say is a pretty good, um, a pretty good and ambitious um schedule. That allows us to be uh responsive to grant opportunities, responsive to changing fuels. Conditions and also uh responsive to all the good work that gets done, you know, from year one to year through year two, three and four. Uh, before the five-year update happens because we we, within our C W P P areas, a lot does get done. So so that all just goes to say five years is, five years is pretty good.
So it mentions federal community wildfire defense grant. Uh, is this a standard process? It's always open for proposals? Is there a window we're trying to respond to?
Uh, yeah, the application ends at the end of this month and that's uh why we've requested this uh agenda request. Um, it's uh, I can't remember the exact cycle. I believe it's uh eighteen to twenty-four months. That they they have uh a new funding proposal request. So this is the second time um that they've put out this proposal.
So end of this month referring to October?
Yes, correct.
Uh, yeah, so as I say, um, I'll be supportive. I don't know. This is, you know, I don't know if this is the, it doesn't look like the final version of an application. So uh, it's the next step.
Yeah, so the the proposal itself uh that the Intergovernmental Council uh sent is not the actual application. Um, the application is an online application that.
Okay, so basically just transferring it to the the content to an online application.
Correct.
Yeah, but to the extent that uh my fellow commissioners would like to see a final version before uh voting to approve it. Um, we're not having uh, we're not having a meeting on Monday the thirtieth. Is that correct? So. But we are.
Okay.
And we we have a couple of items that we do need to um to cover. And uh, so we we will, we will, we we need to have a meeting on Monday and we just hope that uh our uh chair is able to to watch it just if there's issues.
But yeah, I just may be mobile, but.
No decisions that will be will be made, but there are a couple of updates that we had scheduled with departments.
Well, and I wasn't specifically looking to see a final version. The content's here. We understand what's going on. I was just understanding, you know, this isn't a document we're approving. It's is a proposal that it's not in final form. That's all I was acknowledging.
Yeah, we we mostly use this to try and estimate pricing and estimate uh the workload that would take for the for the process.
I was gonna say, I mean, there's really a a great, you know, maybe introductory paragraph for somebody reading the other side, talking about how serious Deschutes County takes the. Uh, you know, community wildfire defense uh uh information, you know, for for the rural rural properties, rural neighborhoods. Uh, we've got our uh um firewise communities. I mean, there's a, there's a great scenario, a paragraph maybe that could go in this also.
And and i- if so, if if my fellow commissioners wanted to see a more final version, we could.
Wasn't asking.
We could have it on the consent agenda on Monday or something like that. Uh, you know, that they. It is a pretty big difference between this this um. This proposal information from C O I C and the hundred fifty thousand dollar kind of potential price tag that. That uh that Kevin is talking about. I I'm I'm comfortable approving it now, but.
I am too.
You know, if anyone wants to see it before they they do a final approval, we could also do it as a, we could bring it back on Monday. Commissioner Dare.
Kevin, when will we know if we actually get the grant? Because even if we don't get the grant, will we be going ahead with this process, project?
Um, I I'm not sure on what the grant process will be after we have submitted our grant. Um, you know, it roughly would probably take one to two months before we uh receive notice if we received the funding. Um, but we will move ahead with trying to update what we've done the entire time. Is just update each individual C W P P um as they come uh to that five-year window. Um, it 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 is such a lift to try and combine them all. That is why we're trying to get funding to do it because we feel we need extra help to do it.
Wait, is there a motion?
Um, so I just wanted to 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 see if Commissioner Dare is comfortable with moving forward now or whether she wants to see a. Uh, more complete and final budget and application on Monday.
I've already made my comments where I thought they should get the mileage up to date. So and um, you know. Yeah, definitely. I think you could uh touch it up a bit, but anyway, no, I don't have to see it on Monday.
I'll move to authorize the submittal of an application for a community wildfire defense grant.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? I would just say that uh a little bit of snow on the ground, kind of, I don't know if it was countywide, but now's the time for that defensible space work. If you're have a few acres, go ahead and, you know, plan on burning a pile in the fall and clean it up. So. Uh, with that, uh, call him for the vote, Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, uh, so yeah, Nick's going to be stepping away and Eric should be joining us today. We were notified of that, or I was. Uh, at this time, item number ten, Notice of Intent to Award a Contract for New Shelter and Housing Units for Male Justice Involved Individuals. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning Commissioners, for the record, D V Holtham with Community Justice.
And I'm Trevor Stevens with Community Justice.
We are here today to um move inch inch along a project that we have spoken with you about a couple of times now. Um, review and authorization of um document number twenty twenty-three dash nine five four, Notice of Intent to Award a Contract. Um, this is a project having to do with uh creating shelter and housing options for um a specific target population of supervised males. Into Deschutes County. And I'm going to turn it over to Trevor to give you a quick update of materials in your document of the process we use and where we're at and what our request is today.
Good morning Commissioners. So we received approval to issue the R F P on August twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. We received one proposal from an organization that's based out of Oregon City. They're a nonprofit known as Free on the Outside. They operate a similar service in the Portland metro area. They operate twenty-three houses. They provide over two hundred beds and sixty-nine of those beds are reserved for a very similar population that we are looking for housing for these services. So. Um, with that proposal, we had an R F P review panel review those proposals. That uh review panel consisted of the J Bar J Director of Runaway and Homeless Youth Programs, Eliza Wilson, the Bethlehem Inn Executive Director, Gwen Wisling. The Fathers Group Vice President, Kelly Musgrove, uh Pro and Probation Tanner Wark, Deputy County Minister Eric Crop. And then the Sheriff's Office is going to have someone on that panel, but because of a scheduling conflict, they were unable to be on that panel. However, we did talk with a member of the Sheriff's Office in the jail and um we did discuss with them that this project could help with jail utilization and just public safety. With P O's knowing where clients are in our community. So on October eleventh, uh Tanner Devie and myself were able to conduct a site visit. With several of the uh houses in the Oregon City area. And we were able to go over some questions that we had with them so we could provide more information to the review panel. Um, on October sixteenth, the review panel met and they made a recommendation that we request and intend to award the contract to Free on the Outside. Some highlights from that process is just the experience that this provider brings. They have over fifteen years of experience providing housing services. They operate those twenty-three houses with over two hundred beds. They utilize a live-in housing manager model. Um, they just do a lot of extensive training around just um trauma-informed care, motivational interviewing, which the panel really liked. They also have clients. They also have uh staff members who have lived experience and who have navigated this successfully. And the panel really appreciated that experience that that brings with that as well. And also the fact that the model um has shown some success in that they start with one house and now have expanded to twenty-three houses. And so they were able to replicate that model and expand it in the um Oregon City area. So I'll open up to questions you may have about the process or about the proposal. And we can kind of go from there.
You mentioned that there's going to be a a live-in, they they use a live-in house manager model. Um. You know, my, uh, when you said Oregon City, my immediate concern was, well, that, you know, the the administrative headquarters is pretty far away from Deschutes County. How does, you know, how does this work? How do you have adequate kind of, you know, org, you know, integration of the organization? To to have effective management of a site like this. And I mean, is 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 that what it's all about? Is it about the live-in house manager?
Yeah, they were, they, their proposal does provide some, I mean, they'll provide quite a bit of initial support from the Oregon City area getting started. But they they rely heavily on those um housing managers to, I mean, they do that rent collection, enforcing those rules. They have like a maintenance form they submit and then I'm assuming from then Oregon City would come into play from there. But they really, that's a similar model that many of our local providers use is that live-in housing manager. To really kind of run that house and provide that support at that ground level. And then as necessary, the administrative part probably would step in and kind of provide that additional support. So.
So the success of this house will really hinge a lot on on that uh live-in housing magic manager.
Uh, yes, I believe they play probably fairly pivotal role in these housing projects.
We would expect to see their administration though from time to time. And I believe the the um executive director has personal connections, you know, family connections here.
Okay.
Um, so I there, I had the sense that that there would be, you know, willingness and ability and obviously they would need to come here if we need to talk with them. And we currently have a contract, for example, with VigilNet uh, which is a uh electronic monitoring company. They're based in. And we currently have a contract, for example, with VigilNet, uh, which is a uh electronic monitoring company. They're based in also the Portland area. They have a satellite office here, and their, you know, executive folks come over from time to time, and of course, the miracle of Zoom and, you know, remote access to folks, I think. That's not, it didn't emerge as a huge concern for us, but it is definitely a a feature of this provider should we move forward with them.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then, you know, just kind of thinking about the full operation and, you know, staffing of 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 this location, I mean, your community justice staff will be there on a pretty regular basis. I mean, and, you know, um, community justice staff work for the county, but in in some sense, you could consider them part of the staffing that makes this a a successful operation. Um, who who else? I I mean, will there be? So there'll be the 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 house manager, you know, there'll be um uh, you know, a parole and probation people who are who are there on a regular basis. Who else will be involved with this? You know, with engage with people at this location.
Based on their Portland model, they rely heavily on, I mean, just community support providers. I mean, thinking of things like workforce programs and so those individuals coming in also, I mean, likely recovery mentors that are for these that are working with these individuals at other treatment providers. It is not un-uncommon for them to go to where these individuals live and kind of work with them on those models. So I anticipate you would see uh community providers also connecting with this service as well in terms of just being there, being onsite and being part of that location, so.
Right. That's helpful to know. Yeah, I mean, when we, you know, with so many of the other, um, you know, with with so many homeless facilities that we talk about, you know, it what's what's critically important is um onsite management, um, rules and structure that that are enforced, you know, and accountability. And then, you know, wraparound services and and case management. So it sounds like, you know, all of those pieces are being um uh effectively addressed by this 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 model or this this structure that they they've planned for um for this operation. Thank you.
Commissioner Dare.
Yes, um, my first question is, this has to be an operation by January ninth of twenty twenty-four. Are we gonna, are we going to make that deadline? And then the fact that they only received seventy-one points um on the analysis by the team, where seventy-one is really a D, I believe. It's almost an F in the grading that I used to know about. Um, I was wondering what where are their shortcomings? And then is it really true that in ten years, this piece of property is going to, the title is going to go over to this group? Is that really what's gonna happen?
Yes, so addressing your last question, Commissioner Dare, yeah, the way the grant works after ten years of a deed restriction, that deed restriction would uh no longer be there, and so then that property would belong to that organization um after those tenure period. In terms of um the panel, I think.
Who who set that up, Trevor?
What do you, excuse me, what was your question?
Yeah, who set that kind of an arrangement up? Um, it sounds like a grandparent giving the grandkid something, but what, yeah, why are they getting this piece of property if we're paying eight hundred fifty thousand for it in today's world? It could actually be worth a million two in ten years, maybe, I don't know. Anyhow, it just seems incredibly uh generous.
Yeah, those are the the requirements that came from the governor's original order, and I think the main goal of that was just to really incentivize people to to look at this type of housing. Oh, many of our local providers haven't opened up this type of housing yet for this. So I think they're really just trying to incentivize organizations to maybe provide these services in our community, but that was uh from the governor's original order that that information was set up that way.
Okay, so are we gonna be able to make that January ninth deadline? Are 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 we gonna be able to find that property?
We are going to do our best. That is, I mean, we understand it's a very tight timeline. We'll be working closely with the provider. We will also reach out to uh COIC who is managing this, just to see if there's any, we we've been talking with them about the process. We keep them pretty updated on this process, just to see if there's any wiggle room within that, but we we do understand it is quite a a tight timeline, and we are, we are definitely concerned about that, but we believe the project is fairly important for the individuals and on clients and our community, so we will do our best to try to get it moving forward if you guys would like to move forward with this process.
And so with their one percent recidivism rate, um, I thought that was really outstanding, but why didn't they score more points? Why? Why were they at seventy-one? I mean, I'm just curious.
I think a lot of the points that I saw deducted were around just their application in terms of talking about um shelter and like low barrier. They didn't clearly out identify like specifically how their program meets low barrier housing standards. And I just think that was just in terms of their understanding of what we needed and what they currently offer in uh Oregon City. And after we talked with them and we provided that information to the panel, the panel was much more um they were, they were much happier with the answers once we had spoken with the provider, but the scoring had already been done before those questions were able to be answered, but all of those panel members mentioned they were, they were supportive of that moving forward, and they were happy with the answers that were provided. So I'm I'm sure if we'd asked the panel members to maybe revise some of those scores, we would have saw the inflation come in into some of those scores, but the main concerns were just around those ideas of shelter housing and how they met that definition. But after talking through that with the provider and them understanding that those restrictions need to come through parole and probation and not from the housing provider, I think we alleviated a lot of those concerns that the panel had.
Thank you, Trevor.
No worries.
So that's a good reminder. So this is Governor's Emergency Order dollars, uh homeless uh housing uh shelter uh through the MAC, the Multi-Agency Coordination Group. Uh, I think it was about fourteen million dollars, round numbers, uh, and this is one of those millions uh for this purpose. So this is really trying to implement something from an emergency order. So the whole timeline's been tight the whole time anyways, uh, but there is support by the MAC, the the group that came to the table to figure out the investments in central Oregon, so. It's exciting to be able to do this. Uh, as I say, you know, this service provider uh having a million dollars available. Uh, and then to kind of jive in the terminology from what the governor's or emergency order says and what the MAC expects. So I just kind of big picture. So yeah, this is a notice of intent to award contract. So we've found somebody that it sounds like they're experienced in the domain. That's that's the exciting part. Uh, as I say, the terminology may be a little different in those domains uh from the governor's emergency order, but for this justice-involved individuals, males, uh, this would be a great tool in central Oregon. And we also know that uh some of the motels and hotels being transitioned to uh housing uh facilities for people have taken some rooms offline. So I mean, it's a changing dynamic out there right now.
So can I make the motion then to authorize County Administrator Signature Document Number twenty twenty-three dash nine five four, a notice of intent to award a contract to create short-term shelter and longer-term housing options for up to twenty-four individuals annually supervised by the Adult Parole Parole and Probation Division?
Second.
Wonderful. Is there any other discussion? Uh, seeing none, Commissioner Dare.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll see us again when we have a location.
Yeah.
You you have spoken with Christie about properties that are in our, um, you know, the tax foreclosed properties that are that are that are coming through the property management office and.
We have not yet. I mean, kind of just waiting, taking it step by step. I think kind of full court press now for moving forward, and we will.
I mean, you know, it would be, you know, just it may be a unicorn-type situation that there just happened to be a tax foreclosed property in our possession right now that fit the fit the bill, but um it it's 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 not impossible either.
Thank you.
Okay, so from item number eleven, Preparation for Public Hearing, Historic Historic Landmarks Commission.
Commissioner Dare has something to say.
Oh, please.
Uh, I would just get to make a comment with the Supreme Court ruling and the fact that twelve states, including Oregon, have been taking people's property in full. Um, I think we're in a um precarious position right now to talk about using any tax foreclosed property.
Well, in this case, there's actually money to pay for the tax foreclosed property, which could be uh directed to whoever the Supreme Court deems is the appropriate entity to receive the funds.
Okay. Item number eleven. So Preparation of Public Hearing, Historic Landmarks Commission Amendments.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, for the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. Um, I'm here to prepare the board for a scheduled public hearing on uh a week from today on November first um for legislative, uh concerning legislative text amendments to the uh Deschutes County Code Title Two, Chapter two point two eight, and the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter Two. Um, the main purpose of these amendments and and staff has come before you uh earlier on, I believe it was August thirtieth, to discuss these issues, so I will keep it relatively brief. Um, the purpose of these amendments is to provide an option to suspend the HLC, the Historic Landmarks Commission, and I'll get into the reasons behind that later, um, upon board order. And then, in that case, review authority that's described in the code um for alterations to historic resources or nominations of new historic resources would fall to the Planning Division. Um, it also has some uh uh smaller edits to remove uh references to the Deschutes County Pioneer Association um because that is no longer uh the entity that it once was, and it's been folded into another um, another group. Um, as we've noted in the past, uh, the HLC has noted uh has seen a slowdown in activity recently um in terms of recruitment as well as just the activities that they are responsible for. Um, there's normally five members. Uh, there are currently three vacancies. Uh, we started recruiting for those in April um and had to extend those recruitments several times. Um, tried to publicize those announcements and kind of reach out to all of the networks um throughout the county and the region. Um, we have two applicants who are kind of waiting in the wings. Um, but aside from that, um, there's just and I've noted this before, uh, the the duties of the Historic Landmarks Commission as as envisioned in the county are fairly limited. They primarily function as a review body. So as I noted, for um reviews of existing uh, excuse me, for alterations of historic resources. So if you own a historic resource and you want to pull the porch off or something like that, you have to have um some element of review. Or if somebody wants to nominate a property to either the National Register of Historic Places or as a locally significant resource, that is what uh the primary role of the HLC is. In my time as the staff liaison to the HLC, which is uh a few years, we've not seen any of those of those things happen. Of course, they could happen at any time, but um they're few and far between. So this this legislative amendment provides this alternate path in the case that in the situation that we're in right now, where there's not quite a quorum, there's not quite enough activity, um, but there is a failsafe for if there is a review that it's not it's not ignored. It's still uh followed according to state law, still reviewed um through a process that is established in the county code. This also gives the board the ability to um reinstate the HLC at any moment. Um, if suddenly there's a groundswell of of uh enthusiasm or participants or people who really want to participate, that can be done. So the amendments essentially leave all the existing language that talk about the HLC and the responsibilities and the protection of goal goal five resources in there. It just builds in this alternate alternate path. Um, it's kind of a failsafe. So um, that is the general idea. Um, in this case, I'll also note that in the event that the board decides to temporarily suspend the HLC, uh, the HLC no longer is a certified local government, otherwise known as a CLG. Um, CLG, we've received, we every couple of years receive some funding through uh the CLG Grant Program um for technical assistance. Uh, this year, we applied for a smaller amount than the maximum owing to just um I would say, lack of of tasks or potential award projects that could fit into that, the purview of that grant. Um, we did a great strategic plan last cycle and a manual, policies and procedures manual, and I think the the commissioners uh who were on the HLC at the time were very pleased with that process, but it's it's kind of slowed down a little bit. So no work has been done on the current grant. Um, so if this would happen, it doesn't adversely affect the grant. It's, there's no money that's been uh spent that we have to, would have to cover or anything like that, so um. And lastly, because the CLG uh also covers Sisters, uh, the City of Sisters has been in the loop on all of this, um, and they would be conducting their own reviews if those come up as well, in the same way that the county would. And again, this pertains just to the rural county and the City of Sisters. Uh, Bend and Redmond have their own um processes and and bodies. Um, so we've received uh one public comment. Uh, we did a mailing um to all owners of historic properties, and this included properties adjacent to some of the canals that are designated. Um, got a lot of questions. Understandably, it's a little confusing when you get the notice in the mail of what this actually is, but um one comment that is available on the public uh record website, um, objecting to this change. Um, and that, that's all we've received so far. So this, the hearing is scheduled for next Wednesday.
Well, and just talking about this discussion today, maybe getting somebody else engaged uh or hearing about it, because this is the code package for this change, because it's been discussed in the past, but man, we just haven't been able to get anybody really step up and the HLC and the list of projects, the whole thing.
Yeah, and and I'll just say that it's not, and I noticed, note this in the memo, it's certainly not for a lack of people in the region who have incredible experience and knowledge and enthusiasm about historic preservation. There's a a community that's very strong, very vibrant, and they they know a lot, and they're fantastic. Um, it's not for a lack of those people, and it's not for a lack of the resources themselves. It's just this it's not aligning, it's not funneling into the relatively narrow purview of the Deschutes County HLC. So I I I want to recognize that there are historical societies in the area. Deschutes County, as well as Three Sisters, who do a tremendous amount of work, and there's you know, a a great amount of people who are involved in those. It's just not translating into the HLC itself.
Is there any uh other planning people in the other counties or the state that this, oh, yeah, we're going through this too, or is this unique for?
In our converse, my conversations with our state, um, our State Historic Preservation Office representative, uh, she did note that you know, having a county HLC is relatively rare. There's definitely several of them, but we Deschutes County has been one of the more active ones, which is, um, you know, it's been fairly quiet. Um, so I think it ebbs and flows. It really just depends on on kind of who's active, who's into it at the moment, what what else is going on. Um. I think, yeah, it's it's, I don't think it's super unique to Deschutes County, honestly, from from the chatter that I've tried to gather.
And then in the last bullet point, talks about a separate section that refers to the selection of a commissioner representing the Pioneer Association. Uh, I do know that uh at Deschutes County Historical Society, basically Pioneer Association has uh uh, you know, sent their resources and membership uh to the historical society, so there isn't two entities per se anymore. There there are some dollars in the bank under the historical society, and annual scholarships are talked uh about for uh high school graduates for college scholarships. So there's like this fund at the Historical Society, which was the Pioneer Association. But uh, yeah, as I say, we have that discussion a little bit at the Historical Society Board Meetings to learn about that history.
Yeah, yeah, and I uh, the way the code was written is that the HLC could have a representative specifically from the Pioneer.
Yeah, and there is no such entity anymore.
Yeah, exactly. So while we were in there, we thought we would.
There's, there's a little bit of activity, kind of, they refer to it as the Pioneer, but there's no entity anymore.
Exactly, exactly. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm I'm sorry not to connect the dots sooner, but I am, Kelly Cannon Miller wrote me a pretty extensive email about uh you know, but positive, you know, putting forward this concept of of this being a good moment to re-establish a joint landmarks commission with some of the cities. And and so I, there's a little bit of me that uh if there's not a time-sensitive aspect to 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 this today, that would like to um kind of, you know, but pause on 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 um moving forward uh at at this moment to let that those discussions take place and and um let her let her come in and engage with the Community Development Department and um and put forward this this concept and and have you all evaluate that and see if it it's something that is is viable or not before we you know, before we kind of move forward with the the um, with the proposed action right now.
We have had those conversations with.
You you may have already had these conversations, but I mean, she she can't, yeah, that was a few weeks ago when I received that email. Um, so if you, if you already had the conversations, you can, maybe you can report back.
Sure, I can. Um, well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Peter Gattaskey, Community Development Director. Uh, I think it's gonna be important to, of course, have the public hearing on next Wednesday. Uh, receive Kelly Cannon Miller, who is uh the Executive Director for the Historical Society, to offer those perspectives. Receive Kelly Cannon Miller, who is the Executive Director for the Historical Society, to offer those perspectives. Certainly, the board doesn't need to take action if you find that testimony to be compelling. Some of the fundamental challenges, just to, we can put it on record, we'll put it on record today, we'll put it on record on the first, is that it will take time to coordinate with Redmond and Bend to see if they're interested in a regional Historic Landmarks Commission. We had one about ten, fifteen years ago. It was housed with Deschutes County and ultimately, it was determined that the City of Ben and the City of Redmond decided to, they broke up with us because they wanted their own certified local government grant pot of money. They wanted their own local control. And so the challenges that come with a regional landmarks commission is you're only, you're only eligible for one, as we understand it, grant. And for, so there's, as as Tanya has said very respectfully, and I'll just reiterate it, we're just not seeing the types of opportunities to engage in historic preservation in rural Deschutes County. And there's reasons for that. We, the property owners have the ability to determine if they want to be listed on a local inventory. There were some changes in state law over the last several years. There was a time in the past where local governments could nominate. Even at the resistance of of property owners and elected officials could could decide for reasons of kind of general welfare that historic property was was warranted. Well, that's changed due to changes to state law. That factor, just coupled with with the realities that we we don't have the resources in the rural Deschutes County that allow the public to engage in their appreciation for historic landmarks in the ways that you do in cities. We have, we have historic downtowns, we have historic districts, we have relics of our kind of European past with you know, you know, extraction with with the timber industry, the old, I'm thinking of the old mill. Certainly, there's, there's, you know, historic presence, you know, in in our national, in our, on our public lands in terms of historic cabins scattered throughout and lodges that are scattered throughout the region. But in rural Deschutes County, it's just not, we don't have that kind of fabric that we might have had decades ago. And as a result, what's happened over the years is we've just exhausted every meaningful level of engagement. We updated the strategic plan. We updated the, we preestablished a policy and procedures manual for the landmarks commission. And we've been kind of operating on the margins and I, I don't, it pains me to tell you this, but it's there's a point at which even with a regional regional landmarks commission, the question is, what would they do for for Deschutes County, for rural Deschutes County? We haven't approved a a local inventory since, I want to say, since periodic review in nineteen ninety-two. Yes, there have been some national nominations that have occurred over the years, the Dedon property. We've had two canals that have been listed on the National Register. Those processes are still available under the the patch that we're offering as respectfully as amendments. But yes, you could have a regional landmarks commission. They would have to divvy up those resources, which are only approximately ten to twelve thousand dollars. And at the end of the day, I'm not sure what it is that we would be bringing to them at the rural county level meaningfully. And the last thing that we want to do, I think, as staff, is to have a commission that we're serving only to find ourselves not able to bring anything meaningful to them. And that means, I mean, no disrespect to the work and the effort that is short, that Deschutes Historical Society does. They're a repository of of our our tremendous history in the region. It's just, the well feels, if I can use that as a metaphor, the well is pretty dry in the rural county. And I'm not sure what a regional commission would do. And I think that's reflected in the fact that with a four to five month recruitment process, we haven't had galvanized interest. And staff has admittedly struggled to bring forth meaningful projects that can, that can you know, generate tremendous amounts of enthusiasm. Most of the work that's been done over the last several years has been with Sisters, with reconnaissance level studies and surveys. And 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 the meaningful aspect of that, to the extent that Sisters ever wanted to create an intensive level survey and maybe even consider an historic neighborhood is you can value those neighborhoods from the street. You can walk those sidewalks. You can experience those those architectural aspects of those neighborhoods in a way that you really can't in the rural county. So that's my respectful response. Again, the board, we will defer to the board. We encourage Kelly Cannon Miller and others to offer testimony that underscore the importance of a landmarks commission in Deschutes County. Staff's just in this unenviable position to say, we don't have a lot to bring to the landmarks commission. And we're not seeing a lot of interest in our residents who want to be a participant. And I think they both work together. You can't have, one affects the other.
So do we think of a historic fifty years or older? What's the window, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
That's it.
That is correct.
You know, it's always coming online.
Well, I was just sitting here thinking, okay, nineteen seventy-three manufactured home in southern Deschutes County is fifty years old now. And everybody basically wants to have it replaced. I mean, it's, it's not historic value, like, oh, let's hold on to that old manufactured home. So I just put a smile on my face. I'm not trying to be rude here, but I was just thinking, hmm, fifty years ago is, what are we trying to?
And one of the things we did several years ago, we did a reconnaissance level survey for historic for, under a recreational element for public lands. You know, we were thinking, oh, you know, obviously there's Bachelor, you've got some of the lodges and resorts along the Cascade Lakes. And the take home messages, most of those have been modified. There has been, there's certainly people have been skiing at Mount Bachelor and been recreating in the Cascade Lakes for for decades. But in terms of of physical relics that are intact and should be preserved, they basically found that they're, they don't exist and those, to the extent that we have those lodges and resorts, they need to be modernized. So I mentioned that study just as an example, like we've, we've really explored you know, not just, not just lands that are subject to county jurisdiction, but public lands and have just found that that there are not a lot of opportunities there. There are still some historic cabins. You might see them in Newbury Crater or Newbury National Monument, excuse me. But there's, we've just kind of, we've exhausted that that window. And again, it's not to say that tomorrow or years down the line, there could be opportunities in the future.
And this is preparation work session for next Wednesday. I mean, as I say, hopefully the people get engaged, Kelly Cannon Miller can respond or hear our discussion today. So this is just a preparation for next week.
And I'll just note real quick that, you know, say, say this regional idea had legs and went, I think this patch would function as sort of an interim thing with regardless of what direction things take, just in the, in the case that someone comes knocking on the door in a month saying, I need a review of this historic property. It just creates that kind of backup procedurally. Regardless of what direction things might eventually go in. So that's just staff.
Wonderful. Well, a couple of other thoughts, you know, the the Van de Vert Ranch and the Van de Vert, there's, you know, book written about that. The Triangle Outfit. So I mean, this was prime, this was Crook County and Primeville was the big name a hundred years ago. So the Triangle Outfit was the Sterns family based out of Primeville. They used to run cattle and then, you know, sheep before that. So but not a lot of structures, you know, I think of the the Grand Lodge at Yellowstone, which I got to see this summer. It's like, wow, look at this beautiful monument. We just don't have those.
And there's certainly, you know, cultural aspects, you know, the tribes have, have, you know, these are ceded lands here.
Oh, yeah.
Cultural, archaeological resources, they do exist here, but local governments don't identify them on a, on a, on an inventory for the because they want to, you want to minimize the ability of vandalism or looters. So it's not to say that that this region isn't rich with both European and indigenous cultural, robust cultural history. It's, it's just honestly, we're just saying that at a local implementation level we're finding ourselves, you know, lacking the opportunity to promote historic preservation and education in ways that just decades ago, there were more opportunities. So.
So as I say, in preparation for next week.
I'll make sure that that Kelly is aware that we're having the hearing next week and encourage her to come in and engage.
Yeah, and I spoke to her last, or communicated her electronically last week. And I know that Kelly respectfully is 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 very, is committed to historic resources, has a lot of ideas and is concerned about what this represents and and we honor that. We're just respectfully sharing with you at this work session what our challenges have been and where they are kind of lining up going forward. Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So at this time, other items, and I see Steve Gunnell, our district attorney's joined us. So if we can, there's a proposed letter on the topic of Measure one ten. So thank you for joining us. I misplace my agenda. So the letter was discussed by the board last week and then earlier this week. There's a proposed draft, I think it was shared with you yesterday afternoon, and it does just kind of boil down to some of the words. Thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you for having me.
Any thoughts specifically? So you were able to see it yesterday or?
Yeah, I reviewed it yesterday and so I, the sentence of concern, I think it's a bullet point in the middle of the letter is recognize that people with a substance use disorder that do not have crime driving factors other than substance use disorder should be provided treatment and recovery services outside of the criminal justice system. So my concern with that sentence is that it it seems to imply that drug possession should remain decriminalized as it is under Measure one ten, simple drug possession. And so that's, for me, that's, that's not that's not where I'm coming from on Measure one ten. I, I perfectly understand if that's where the commission's coming from, and that's, that's essentially what Measure one ten has done already. And that's, that's where I criticize Measure one ten, to be honest. But if if that's the commission's, you know, intention with that sentence, then I'm I respect it, but I'm out on the, on signing the letter.
Yep, understood. Okay. So as I say, it's kind of a tight rope of words here, you know, because there's, you know, repeal or reform terminology is where I started off with, you know, if we're asking the legislature to have a special session to reform, or if we're asking the legislature to, you know, put something on the ballot to repeal, is say, this is kind of my starting point. And then, yeah, this was the the words that just kind of kept getting whittled down here. So yeah, I do have a copy of it here. Commissioner Dare, do you have a copy available?
I'm reading my copy and I completely agree with our DA. I, I want this repealed. As I said, Monday, who's looking after the kids? The kids that are just, the the life changing to all those fentanyl babies and all those children. And yesterday I heard about another family. The grandmother's raising three kids. I, I mean, it's astronomical. Why is it every, practically every day I run into people that are being affected? And the fact that you could have Narcan and it can save you, you still have that damage to your brain from having the overdose. We've got to do something more. So I, I really want to have a much stronger letter against. And I'm, I'm perfectly happy to do my own letter and I do have the meeting on Friday with Jessica's group. But I just feel like what I've, you know, what we've learned recently with all those children, it's, it's horrible. It's, and it doesn't seem like it's getting any better.
DA Gunnells, I, I appreciate your concern and I I'm, I'm trying to think about how we, you know, short of just deleting this bullet, how it would be modified to address your concerns. Really, I guess the question is, what, what would you recommend we do with people who have not committed other crimes besides possession of, you know, small amounts of of controlled substances?
So the I, I believe that sentence or that bullet point could be fixed with changing the word outside the criminal justice system to within the criminal justice system. That the, the goal of the criminal justice system with regard to simple possession cases is treatment. I think that that change would reflect
Right.
that sentiment.
Is there, is there a room for the word diversion in here somewhere? I mean, you know, that diversion recognizes that you're working within the criminal justice system, but you're trying to you know, basically get people out of the criminal justice system into, you know, you know, into the treatment and recovery services that they need.
Yeah, I mean, there, there, there may be, that's, that's probably more of a legislative detail. Is my understanding of the way that, that the legislature is working on this or thinking about this is potentially there's going to be the equivalent of a DUI diversion for drug, simple drug possession on the first go around like it is for DUI. DUI crime, the first go around a simple possession is, is potentially going to have a diversion option like DUI does.
Well, I mean, this, this letter is intended, you know, we are making legislative recommendations. So I mean, I, I don't think it's, we don't have to shy away from making legislative recommendations if you know, if this is, if that's the intention of this letter.
Right. And so diversion is, is one path within the, the the legislative ambit, I think, on, on the solution to Measure one ten. But that's for first, that's for first time offenders. And so when they, when somebody comes back for the fifth time with a simple drug possession charge, does that also get a diversion outside of the criminal justice system? And so on, and so on, which is real.
Is there a way that this sentence could be structured to, you know, essentially say you know, within the criminal justice system, using tools such as diversion and other things, you know, other, I don't know what you would recommend the other things would be, but to, you know, essentially to indicate that. Right. I, I, I very much appreciate that, the idea that we do not decriminalizing position is not necessarily the right thing. But, you know, on the other end of the spectrum, saying, you know, you're a hardened criminal criminal because you were caught with a small amount of some substance. I don't think that's the appropriate, you know, that, I don't think that's the appropriate kind of approach to this issue either. And so how do we, how do we kind of find the the practical solution oriented approach, you know, that, that the proactive approach to this, you know, this bullet point?
The most of, of the proposals that I've heard about, the most tough on crime, so to speak, proposal is to make simple possession and class A misdemeanor and offer diversion on the first time offend, for first time offenders with a simple possession charge. And then subsequent charges would be treated within the normal criminal justice system as they have been for the last thirty years at least, with drug treatment being the primary response by the court to people who are addicted to drugs, ordering them into treatment on twelve months or eighteen months probation. And so that's, I'm, I'm perfectly open to the DUI diversion type approach to simple possession for first time offenders. But that's, but that's one of the options for, for the crime. And that's the first option. But, yeah.
So in an abstract fashion, the bullet two steps up, ensure there are effective and appropriate drivers to get people into treatment. That kind of abstracts the whole concept, but that makes that same statement.
It elides the, the criminal criminal versus non criminal issue, which is the primary issue with Measure one ten, in my opinion.
Yeah. Well, I, I really like the idea of within the criminal justice system. You know, I have no problem with that because that is, that is what's going on here. You know, there's, here's your violation. Well, we're not even going to write violations. Well, we don't know what to do now. I mean, it's just kind of gone downhill in the last year.
Right. So I mean, if it said within the criminal justice system, including diversion and other treatment approaches or other you know, treatment, treatment based approaches, something like that. I, I totally agree. You know, treatment, treatment based approaches, something like that. I, I totally agree with that, that. That those are, those are fine.
That would work for me. So within the criminal justice system, including diversion options or?
And that, that way, to me, it makes clear that what the commission is saying is. That it's appropriate for these to be handled within the criminal justice system, but. But not as the crime of the century, simple possession as the crime of the century. We want to get people treatment. And, and that's. One of the goals of, of bringing them into the criminal justice system is to compel treatment. Which I've seen as effective in the, in the drug court. Model in particular.
Which fits right back to that concept.
It's all about accountability and compelled treatment.
So if there's support for within the criminal justice system, including diversion options. Are we there?
Including diversion approaches.
Approaches is fine. Yeah. So for us, the Board of Commissioners, as a body, if we get to, yes, we'll have three signatures and then it'd be your choices and elected official to either sign it or not.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing I would say about this letter is. The other half of measure one ten is the. Funding stream for expanding treatment capacity, which is. Minimally discussed in, in this letter. We are going to have, I, I hope that we actually are going to have a. A board presentation and discussion of. Where the BHRN dollars are going within Deschutes County right now and, and. What kind of treatment pack capacity that is created. So there, there, I also think it would be very appropriate to consider. Timing out on this letter until after that, until we, after we have that presentation. At which point we would be in a position to potentially make stronger statements about. How we build treatment capacity in our community and how that should be part of, part of the measure one ten discussion.
So every other bullet on here talks about treatment, services, substance use disorder. Services. So that's all spending money. I think it's already there implied. Also, I do feel it's time to send something out, take a position. You know, the legislators are talking about prepping for short session in twenty four or, you know, whatever else. So I mean, I do not. Support standing by at this point in time.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable signing, signing on this letter as. As drafted with the, the, the revisions we've discussed today. But I also think it would be. You know, it would be entirely appropriate to wait until after our, our presentation on. How the burn dollars are being spent in our community.
Commissioner Dare.
Okay. So who's, where is the money coming for the five fentanyl babies? That were just born in, in sixty days. Where's that money coming? I, I really, I'm, I'm going to sign a letter that says I want measure one ten repealed. And then whatever's best to help people. That, okay, it's their first time, but. Appar, we have an epidemic. We have people that are overdosing and then they're overdosing and they're overdosing again and again. We have to do something more. It's. It's destroying a lot of families, a lot of children's lives. Yes. So. No, I, I, I'm only going to sign a letter that says repeal.
Uh, okay. So not this letter.
Yeah. No, I'm going to write my own letter because I want, I want the bloody thing repealed and then I want it fixed. It's, it's definitely. Not been the best route for Oregon. When you consider where, we're forty ninth in the nation for residential treatment beds. And I don't believe we've really added any since the burn money happened. So we're still at the bottom of that list and it's, it's very unfortunate.
So I'm still supportive of a letter like this. Maybe it's Commissioner Dare Chang and I, I mean, and the district attorney. In support of the AOC discussion. So Friday, AOC is getting together. Deschutes County is making some statements here. Within the criminal justice system is, is a statement, ensure there are effective and appropriate drivers to get people into treatment as a statement. And, you know, repeal is, is, is just that. You know, big statement saying, let's just make it better. But this is a little bit more. Specific and, and pieces. So I'll, I'll move approval of this letter as proposed.
I'll second.
And it's been seconded. So. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Chang.
Yes.
Commissioner Dare.
I'm not signing it. No.
Chair will vote yes. So as I say, it looks like it'll be your choice. It looks like two, two signatures from the Board of Commissioners with Commissioner Dare making her statement.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Man, just a point of clarification. How, how would the, how would the board like the letter, the signature line? Because. Even it's a two to one vote, but, but two, of course, can speak on behalf of the board. But just in terms of taking Commissioner Adair's signature off. And then should it read on behalf of the board?
So Commissioner Dare, I mean, you still have an opportunity to sign it. I know you're not voting yes. Do you, you're not going to sign this letter?
No, I want it repealed. It's not working.
So then my vision is, yeah, Board of Commissioners with two signatures, District Attorney with another line, just like it's formatted now.
Okay. So we'll leave it as is. I'll remove Commissioner Adair's signature line.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't feel like it has to say Board of County Commissioners. It could just. Have your name and title, my name and title. And if RDA chooses to sign on his, his name and title.
That's fine. So.
Honors Commissioner Dare's, you know, lack of support for this letter.
So then our titles will say.
Just, just.
County Commission.
Sincerely, you, me.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you for joining us. And timing worked out pretty well here. It was a good half hour before you here, but not too bad. Thank you so much. Okay, other items. Anything else?
Oh, where's our safe parking in the county proposal? Where, where's the status of that?
I planned to bring that to the board on November sixth, but I actually wanted to check in with the board today. Whether or not that meeting will have all three commissioners, that is AOC legislative days is November sixth through eighth. So that, that was one of the items I wanted to get.
Uh, referring to a board meeting at one o'clock here, or if we would be in Salem.
Yes. But I was, Commissioner Dare, I was targeting November sixth for that draft ordinance.
You can't, you couldn't do.
So we're having, I don't know that we're having November sixth because AOC.
Is the next week.
Conference is the next week. So I think we're available on that date. I would assume we are.
I was, I was asked to come and give testimony on the seventh. In the morning. So I would prefer us, I, I mean, I, I may be, I may be missing the, the Monday meeting if it, if it's actually going to happen.
The other option is I could do November eighth. Does that work for, works better for you, Commissioner Chang?
Eighth would be great.
Okay.
We go. Okay. So that's, that answers that, Commissioner Dare.
Thank you.
That was one of the one other items, things I was going to bring up is asking whether other commissioners wanted to be in Salem. Uh, within that six, seventh, eighth time period.
Is that legislative days or what's? So that, yeah, there's the committee hearings, committee work being done.
Okay. If so, I, I'd propose that we not meet on, on Monday, the sixth.
Uh, well, yeah, as I say, so an AOC does not have meetings that day. I guess that's, that was the first step. So then. So we will not, yeah. So we won't have meetings that day on the sixth, the November.
Okay. So canceling the November sixth board meeting, but. Keeping the November eighth is Wednesday.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, good.
We'll update the calendar for that.
So is that, is that what you need to Commissioner Dare? On safe parking?
Yes.
Okay. Anything?
Could you send it out early, Eric, as soon as possible, what you have?
Yes, I'd be happy to. The other item I had is the Central Oregon Regional Housing Council representative. There was a letter from COIC asking that the Regional Housing Council rep and the Crowe Board member be the same person. In our case, it's different. Commissioner Dare is on the Crowe Board, of course, and then Commissioner Chang is on the Regional Housing Council. I did follow up with COIC on their request and I would characterize it as. A request and not a requirement that they be the same person. But I just wanted to bring this letter to the attention of the board.
What's the domain of the region, Regional Housing Council? Who has information on that?
Commissioner Chang, do you want to speak to it or do you want me to?
You, you could give an introduction.
Yes, it's, and I'm reading from the COIC letter. The Regional Housing Council is designed to be a body of elected officials and ex-official decision makers that identify and fill gaps. And housing and homeless programs, systems and policies. So it's broader than central. Or, yes, broader than Deschutes County. Additionally, the council is an opportunity to communicate regional priorities to the state. And a space to communicate on local and regional housing issues and best practices.
Is it? Is it authorized by or requested by or funded by somebody or is it just a local effort? I don't have a feel for it. So I think of the housing authority, housing works. Now we have this thing called Regional Housing Council. I just don't have a feel for how it. How does it get constituted? That's my, my question.
It, the, the request for membership was issued in twenty twenty two. I believe that all three of us were, you know, had the opportunity to, to put our hat in the ring for that. And I was the one who, I think I was the only one who expressed interest. And the body has not, you know, that, the body has not actually met in a year, basically. So. I'm not sure whether, you know, how much momentum it actually has, but.
So do you want to still be involved? Is this a?
I'm, I'm happy to, I'm happy to, to, to serve in that role. I do think, you know, the housing, our housing authority does projects. You know, this is more of a, you know, this is a body that could help us in, you know, policy discussions. With the state and, you know, because housing works, doesn't lobby. Doesn't lobby on behalf of, of housing. It, it, it does projects. So. You know, that's some of the potential of this, of this entity, but, you know, I. Since it, since it hasn't met, I, I can't, I can't tell you that. It's going to be incredibly, incredibly value. I also can't tell you that it's not going to be incredibly valuable.
Yeah. So I don't, as I say, now, now I'll go do my homework and see how, you know, who's your creative buyer? What's the purpose? You know, if it's a lobbying legislative. Effort, you know, that, that's interesting in itself, but I don't know that for sure.
And you know, that there is also the. Uh, the, the, the governor has convened this, this housing council for the state, you know, Deb Flagan and, and. At least one other person from Central Oregon is, you know, are participating in that body. So. You know, that, you know, it's quite possible that that. Actually fulfills the, the kind of policy and legislative functions that we need for the Central Oregon region. I am, I don't, you know, it's.
Okay. Yeah. So we don't have.
Fast moving world.
I don't, yeah, there's. Do you have any more information on that, Commissioner Dare?
Um, no, I don't. I believe Nick talked to me about it on Monday. And I said, you know, I thought it was fine that we have two separate people. And the fact that Commissioner Chang just said they hadn't met in a year. Is perhaps twenty four, they're going to really step it up. So we. You know, I, I don't see why we have to have the same person.
Okay. So let's just leave it where it is. If it comes around again, we'll. Hopefully have more information.
Would the, the board like me to get back to COIC to confirm Commissioner Chang's? Role as the, our representative or would the board like more information?
Well, I'd like more information. I just, I mean, I mean, I don't know if, is there an appointment process? Or is it just not changing? You know, so I, I read it as not changing.
I read it as not changing. Yeah. I mean, the board. The board, when, I forget when it was, if it was last January, but you know, in terms of the, the board appointed Commissioner Chang to this role.
Yeah.
There's no action.
Go fix the housing world.
So I will get more information on it and confirm that Commissioner.
There, there's no action to be taken.
Yeah.
Board currently. Yeah.
I will confirm with COIC that Commissioner.
Different, two different commissioners serving.
At this time. Yes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Uh, anything else? Other, other items, Commissioner?
I'll mention that the, the reason I wasn't at the Fair and Expo Board Joint Meeting last night. In person was because I was at a, a, a meeting with the Oregon Early Learning Council, which is a newly constituted state body. That is there to bring focus to, you know, to, to our childcare needs across the state. They have developed a system plan. I'll leave this kind, sorry, you only brought, I only got one copy. I'll leave it upstairs and people can, people, you know, we can leave it where we've been leaving that legislative. Uh, record document and, and people can take a look at it and. You know, if anyone needs another copy, I'm sure we can, we can request them. But the, the, the chair of the council and the. I think the five members of the council were all, were all at the event. They sort of capping off a, a day where they had been learning about. All of the great work that we've been doing in Central Oregon. And then, you know, I'll, I'll carry back to the Board of Commissioners that, that. The Early Learning Council was really impressed with the American Rescue Plan funding allocations that we made for. Both workforce and facility projects in Deschutes County.
Great. Okay, anything else? No executive session today?